Right. Now you can see that. Hello everyone, welcome to Sutta Study Series. Every Friday at 6:00 PM. We started with the Machimanikaya and today we are going to continue to extend our discussion on Anangana Sutta. And the first part of the sutta was done last time and last week actually. So today I am going to discuss the second part of the sutta. Okay, so. Before starting, I would like to start actually with salutation to the Buddha. Let us get started with salutation to the Buddha. And. Namutthas Bhagavatuh Arhatu Samma Sangbuddhas. Namutthas Bhagavatuh Arhatu Samma Sangbuddhas. Namutthas Bhagavatuh Arhatu Samma Sangbuddhas. Honor to him, the blessed one, the worthy one, the fully enlightened one. My utmost respect to the perfectly enlightened Samma Sangbuddha and the noble doctrine of the Samma Sangbuddha and the great Mahasangha, the disciples of the Buddha. So today. I am going to start with our sutta, this is where we have started last time. We discussed about the four kinds of people. And today I am starting from where we have left off. And this is where we have left, the four kinds of people we were talking about and how the person who knows that he has a blemish and the person who doesn't know that he has a blemish. And the third person is he, the person who doesn't know that he has no blemish. And the fourth person is the person who knows that he does not have any blemish. So out of these four people, the Buddha appreciated the second and the fourth people. The third person, the person who has no blemish, but still he doesn't know that he has no blemish. And then there is a chance that person has come back to the lust. You know, and grieved and ignorance. And all these things can be overwhelmed in him or her. So it's very important to be mindful of our own blemishes. So today with that, we will discuss why and what are those blemishes that can hinder you, that can disturb you, that can actually unsettle your beautiful peace of mind. Thaanankho paneetam avso vijyatiyam idhe kachas bhikkunu evan ichcha upajaya. Apatin chavata apannu asang nachman bhikkujanayum apating apannoti. Thaanankho paneetam avso vijyatiyam thang bhikkum bhikkum bhikkujanayum. Apatting apannoti. Janatimam bhikku apating apannoti. Iti so kupito hoti appatiito. Yochevako avso ko pocha yoche appachio ubhayametam anganam. Now. Thaanankho pana etang avso vijyatiyam idhe ekachas bhikkunu evan ichcha upajaya. So this discourse can happen to some monk. Ekachas bhikkunu means some monk, a certain monk. Evan ichcha upajaya, upajaya. He can have a desire can happen to him. A wish might be born into him. Ichcha upajaya, evan ichcha upajaya. What kind of a wish? Apatin chavata apannu asang. If I commit an offense, apati means offense. Nachman bhikkujanayum apating apannoti. That person, the person who has done that mistake, committed the mistake, he doesn't want to know, want others to know that offense. I hope the other mendicants don't find out. Nachman bhikkujanayum apating apannoti. I don't want others to know that I have committed an offense, I have done. So that person, that monk doesn't want, that bhikkhu doesn't want to know. Thaanankho pana etang avso vijyatiyam thang bhikkunu bhikkum bhikkujanayum. But it is possible that the mendicants do find out that that mendicant or that bhikkhu has committed an offense. Even though the bhikkhu doesn't want others to know, but it is possible. Thaanankho paneetam avso vijyatiyam bhikkhu bhikkujanayum. It is possible that the other monks will come to know about that. Apatting apannoti, he has committed an offense. He has done something wrong, he has done some offense. Janantimi bhikkva apating apannoti, other bhikkhus might know that. Then what happened? Iti so kupito hoti appatiito. Then what will happen? Thinking that mendicants have found about my offense, they get angry. So they, it's actually so kupito hoti means this monk. So here is he, not they. So that anger, so kupito hoti appatiito, he will not, he will be angry. So kupito hoti appatiito means he will be angry and appatiito means bitterness will be there. That is the problem here. And what is the kupita? Kupita here means anger, right? So like he doesn't want the other people to know and then it is so kupito hoti. Then that will become a big issue. Yoche eva ko avso ko pocha appachio ubhayametam anganam. So that anger and ko pa means anger, appachio means bitterness and ubhayametam, both these things are anganam, they are blemishes. So one, he has, he or she has already done the mistake. Yeah, and committed an offense. Now when he comes to know or when he thinks or when he assumes that the others will get to know about that, he himself will get angry. And then what will happen? That is another mistake. One, he has already done the mistake. Two, he is also getting angry about that. So both of them are his own problems. And Thaanankho paneetam avso vijyatiyam idhe kachas bhikkunu evan ichcha upajaya. Apatin chavata apannu asang. Anuraho mang bhikku chodayum no sanghamajeti. Now, the second situation is if I commit an offense, I hope the mendicants accuse me in private, not in the middle of the sangha. Now see, the first wish, according to the first wish, he commits an offense, he doesn't want others to know about that. Somehow it can happen that the other monks will get to know about that. Then he will be angry. And the second wish is now he knows that the monks have already come to know about that. Now he wants those monks, those bhikkhus to accuse him in private, not in the middle of the sangha. Now that is another wish of him. Thaanankho paneetam avso vijyatiyam thang bhikkhu bhikkum bhikkhu sanghamajay chodayum no anuraho. But it can happen sanghamajayamam bhikku chodentu. Chodenti no anuraho titi so kupito hoti appatiito. The problem is it is possible that those monks do accuse him in the middle of the sangha. There is a possibility, there is a chance that those monks will still accuse him in public, not in person. So if that happens. Yochevako avso ko pocha, now he will be angry, right? So kupito hoti appatiito, he will be angry and he will be bitter. But and then ko pocha appachio, both of them ubhayametam anganam. So ko pa and appachio, bitterness and anger, or ko pa is anger, appachio is bitterness. They both are blemishes. And now, now we have third location here. Thaanankho paneetam avso vijyatiyam idhe kachas bhikkunu evan ichcha upajaya. Another, another wish is there. Apatin chavata apannu asang sappati puggalu mang chodaya no appati puggaloti. It's possible that some mendicant might wish if I commit an offense, I hope I am accused by an equal, not by someone who is not an equal. Now that is also an interesting thing. He knows now already, everyone has come to know about that. Now he, he doesn't want some, you know, lower, lower or junior monks or equal monks, maybe. Or lower monks, he doesn't want a lower monk to accuse him. Now he knows everyone will accuse him, the monks will accuse him. Now he is again having a wish that if I am accused, I am a senior monk or whatever, you know, and then I should be accused only by the equal monks, not the junior monks. Senior monks or equal monks are okay, but not the junior ones. This is another wish of him. But then again, it can happen that the junior monks might still accuse him. And then again, what will happen? Appati puggalu manchodeti no sappati puggaloti iti so kupito hoti appatiito. Again, he will be angry and he will be bitter. And so yochevako avso ko pocha appachio ubhayametam anganam. Now again, ko pa and appachio, the anger and bitterness will both be blemishes. Now apart from one, now he has more. Thaanankho paneetam avso vijyatiyam idhe kachas bhikkunu evan ichcha upajaya. You see the one who has committed an offense, he or she has such a huge, such a strong ego or sakayaditi and that he or she tries, he is so level-bait to undermine that mistake. And the ego is so much hurt when it comes to know that the other people will get to know about that and then other people will accuse and then other people will accuse in public and and then the other people like junior to him will accuse and all these things. And then again, he wants to think something else now. Aho vata mamae sattha patipuchitva patipuchitta bhikkunandhamandeseiya. Na anyam bhikkun sattha patipuchitta patipuchitta bhikkundhaman bhikkunandhamandeseiyaati. Oh, I hope the teacher will teach the mendicants by repeatedly questioning me alone, not some other mendicant. Now. Another, another wish, this is another wish actually. So what happens here? This person or the monk wants the when someone, some teacher teaches the dhamma talk, gives a dhamma talk, he wants all the questions to be led to him, you know. Okay, what do you think Sumangala, what do you think Revatha, what do you think Kassapa, whatever. And he wants the attention from the teacher, not towards the other people. And but it is possible that the teacher will teach the mendicants by repeatedly questioning some other mendicant and not like you want to maybe glorify yourself, you know, highlight yourself or be what do you call, you want to be recognized by the others as a big, very knowledgeable one or, you know, so that you will get acclaimed by the others. But it is possible that the teacher will not pay attention to the him. Maybe the teacher will ask the question from other monks instead. And then his name and fame will not be there anymore. So he gets angry again, right? And when he gets angry, what happened? Not only he has a wish, that is a wrong thing. And now he has ko pa and appachio, that is anger and bitterness. Both of them are angan or blemish. Now we have another one. Thaanankho paneetam avso vijyatiyam idhe kachas bhikkunu evan ichcha upajaya. So another ichcha, another desire, another wish will occur in him. Upajaya. Aho vata mamae vabikkhu purakkatha purakkatha gaman bhatae paviseyum. Na anyam bhikkum bhikkhu purakkatha purakkatha gaman bhatae paviseyum. These are like very silly things in fact, you know. Now, now he wants to have him always come to the front, not the other people. And now I hope the monks will enter the village for the meal, putting me at the very front, not some other mendicant. So he wants to be the first, not the others. And that's another wish, okay? So because that the person who goes first will be highlighted, will be in today's context, you know, everyone will take the photo of that person. He will be in the frontline news or something. So the person who goes first will have more recognition, will have more attention from the audience. So the monk, even though, you know, these are very, very, very important to know that even those simple things can happen to us because of our ego, because of our sakayadi. These are really very, if we are not mindful, this can really make us unhappy and this can make us angry and this can also keep us in the sansara for even more longer time. Now they are, the monks are going for an arms round and which is a good thing. And even then you see how those among the senior monks, if they think, okay, I will be the first today. Maybe the other people will ask, other monks will ask me to go first. You know, something like that. And if that doesn't happen, that monk will be very upset. Not only he will be upset, but he will be also angry and he will be bitter. And then that bitterness, that anger can also give him more blemish. So ko pocha appachio ubhayametam anganam. So ko pa and appachio will be there, anger and bitterness will be there. But though both of them are angan or blemishes. So now Thaanankho paneetam avso vijyatiyam idhe kachas bhikkunu evan ichcha upajaya. Another, another. Everything will be very interesting, like now we are trying to hang on something or the other. Okay, I was not given the priority when I go for Pindapada. Maybe I will get priority here now. Aho vata ahamevala beyam bhatage aggasanam agga godakang agga pindang. Na anyo bhikkhu labheyya bhatakang agga godakang agga pindang. So now he is wishing now, okay, I didn't get it. Maybe now this time when I come back to the temple, I will get the bhatage, you know, bhatage aggasanam. So the best seat, agga asanam, the front seat, may I, I will get the front seat. Agga or the best seat, agga udakang, the first or the water, you know, agga udakang, agga can be best or even can be first. Like if you are in the front seat, you know, that person will be offered first. Anyway, everyone, even the one who is at the last seat will be getting the food and everything. But our ego, our sakayaditi, you know, is so strong that, you know, those silly things sometimes. You might think, oh, this is very silly, you know. But this is how the mind plays with us. This is how the Mara, the kilesas, the defilements play with us. And this is how we are dragged into the long, long sansara. We have to be really mindful, we have to be really aware of this danger even while doing practicing, especially these are very good for monks and nuns and all the other practitioners, you know. So this is very important. So aggasanam, he will get, he thinks he will get the best seat. Agga godakang, he thinks he will get the best food, the best water or agga pindang, he will get the best food. I prefer here actually agga here at the front seat and front water and front udaka is water or drink is okay. Or agga pindang is front or the first food. So when the monks actually bring food back to the temple, they sit together and then there will be, you know, seating arrangements and they will start having food. And now they know they are going to have food and still still the complications, still the defilements, still the blemishes can conquer you, can confuse you, can complicate things. Really, really, if we are not mindful about that, this thing can happen. So even though that person wishes so, it can go to, it can go to another monk and then that monk will be angry and he will be bitter. And this anger and bitterness, both of them will become blemish. Thaanankho paneetam avso vijyatiyam idhe kachas bhikkunu evan ichcha upajaya. Another ichcha, another wish is there now. Aho vata ahameyobhatage bhuttavi anumodeyum. Na anyo bhikkhu bhatage bhuttavi anumodeyati. Now I hope that I alone give the verses of gratitude. Anubhuthanamodana is, you know, a monk, one of the monks, you know, out of the many. One of the monks will give a speech or what do you call dedication or merits after the food, you know, bhatage bhuttavi anumodeyati. So now this monk thing, okay, I am, I am an educated one, I am a senior one, you know, whatever he might think. And then he expects that thing to happen to him. He expects that the organizers, you know, or the sangha community will invite him. Okay, Sumedha, you will, may you do the discussion or the bhuthanamodana today. Can you dedicate the marriage today? You might think so. And if that doesn't happen, what will happen? He will be angry, he will be ko pa, he will have ko pa and appachio. He will be angry and bitter and that itself will become a blemish, anganam. Now we discuss about quite a few things, very, very minor though, but you know, this is how we have to work on those simple things. The Buddha said actually anumatesu vajyesu bahadasavi sikkatasip kavadesu. We have to be really careful and we have to be really mindful and scared of those minor offenses that we might do something like this. You know, if you keep doing, maybe the jealousy comes to you and maybe the anger comes to you, maybe the bitterness comes to you and then you will be unpleasant, your mind will be unsettled, you won't be able to meditate, you think of that even afterwards. All these things can happen to you. So it's really important that when those things are there, you, if you are not mindful, if you are not aware of these things, unconsciously these things can actually hamper you, your practice. That's why we all have to be very careful, even the monks have to be very careful. Practitioners all have to be careful, even in your personal life. And not only, not only for the monks and nuns, you also think. You know, sometime it can happen to you. Maybe you are a community leader and you think, okay, I will be invited for the guest speaker or something as a guest speaker and you are not invited and then what will happen? You will be angry, right? And then maybe we always like to be and you don't get it and you get angry, even it can happen to a small kid, to an elderly person, to whosoever, you know. And maybe educated person, maybe whatever capacity you have. Maybe you are a doctor, you, you think you are, you are, I am the more knowledgeable person here and I am not invited and then you get angry. So not only you are not invited, but also you are angry and then you are bitter and both of them are blemishes. And it can happen to anyone just because the root is the same. The root cause is the same and that is our ego, that is our conceit. So mana, sakayaditi, all these are really, really making us complicated and confused. That is why the, out of the three unwholesome roots, you know, the lobadosamoha. This moha thing is very, very, very confusing. It can really. This Moha thing is very, very, very uh confusing. It can really make you fool. Um, you know, when you have, when you are angry, you know it, you can recognize you are angry. Uh, you know, when you are lustful or desirous, uh you also can recognize it. But the, the ignorant thing. It, this ignorance can really make you fool and it can play hide and seek game all the time. You don't even know how it can mess you up and how it can uh confuse you. And complicate you even out of where you might be in trouble. So just want to. Um, make things clear to you, uh please be very, very, very careful. And it is very important. The Buddha said like we have to be so simple and humble, just like a doormat. Doormat is tapped on by everyone, you know, everyone will put the dirt on it. So no one, no one likes the doormat. So the monks have to be like so simple and so humble like a doormat. And then you won't be disturbed, you won't be uh hurt. By any of the, uh, any of those things that can elevate your ego, that can generate more anger or bitterness in you. Now. Here, ahho, uh. Um, I might teach the Dhamma to the monks, nuns, laymen and lay women in the monastery, not some other man, mendicant. So here actually, Aramagatanam Bikkunang, it is mentioned here as Aramagatanam Bikkunang, right? Bikkun means actually the monks. So, uh, ahoh, what, ahameva, ahangeva, I mean myself, you know, so this so much ego. And Aramagatanam Bikkunang, the one, uh, the, the monks who have gone to the. Um, the temple Arama, uh Dhamman Desayung, Ahangeva Dhamman Desayung. I only will uh preach the, the, the Dhamma to them. Not other monk, I am the one, I am the big one, I am the educated one, I am the more. Fascinated one, I am the, the leader, whatever you think, you know, and then you think, you expect, you wish and it doesn't happen to you. Then you become angry and bitter. That itself will become angana to you. And same thing uh can happen to Upasakhanan. Now, not only the monks and nuns, Bikuninang also, you see, and Upasakhanan, these are the lay, laypeople. Lay, laymen and Upasikhanan is laywomen. So our ego. Uh, plays in so many different ways, now you can see that. And if that doesn't happen to you. You will get upset and angry. Okay, this is the same thing. Um, so it can happen. Uh, that yeah, another monk will be given the opportunity and you get angry and upset. Okay, the other one is. You know, another, another itcha is there, another wish. Now, a certain monk might think, you know, the other people or other monks. Uh, Bikkun means actually monks, Sakkareyung, they will treat me, they will. Honor me, Garunkareyung, they will reverence me, you know, Maneyung, um, they will reverence me. And Pujayung, they will salute me, venerate me and Mamaeva, everything me alone. Eh, na, na Anyambikkum, not other Bikkus will be, uh, will be respected and, uh, you know, revered, honored. Uh, saluted, no, not others, only me. Yeah, now, another wish. So wherever I go with the, the large number of monks and so I, if I think that way. That will be a big, big problem because there is an opportunity, there is a chance that, uh, you know, another monk will be. It may be a more popular monk, maybe a more educated monk, maybe a more. Simple monk, maybe, you know, maybe whatever reason, due to whatever reason, another person might get the. Uh, get the, the limelight and then uh this monk will be upset and angry. Uh, so another, another problem. Uh, same thing, uh, not only uh by the monks, but also by the, the nuns, Bikunis. Bikunis also, now he thinks now, uh, when I am in the middle of the Bikunis, the all the Bikunis will. You know, respect me, uh, and not the other monks. And if the other monks are respected. And saluted and honored and revered and I'm not angry. So this is another problem. And same thing with the Upasakas, lay devotees, lay male devotees and Upasika, Upasika, female devotee. So whenever and wherever I go, I expect that respect, honor, salutation, everything. To me alone and not the others. But when the others are respected and saluted and venerated and. Everything and I am not happy, I'm angry. And so you can also apply this one, the, the, this discussion is basically for the monks. But you can apply it to your own uh day-to-day uh activities, maybe at your office, imagine. Maybe you are the, yeah, you are a chief clerk or whatever, maybe staff, um, the, chief staffs. Chief academic officer, whatever, you know, and then suddenly you are not given the limelight, you are not given the priority. And someone else will get the priority and someone else will get the salutation and. Uh, veneration and respect and then you get angry. Because you expect that, when you expect that. Uh, and when you don't get that thing, then you will be frustrated and the frustration leads to aggression. That is the problem. So every time it can happen to any of us, it can happen to a small kid. It can happen to a child, uh, young person, a mother, father or, or teacher, elder, monk, nun. Anyone, it can happen, a leader, uh maybe like, let's say like, there is a conference, international conference. So you think you are a very well-educated, you deserve attention by everyone and, but you don't get it. If you don't get it, you get angry and bitter. And so things like that can happen to all of us. And if we are mindful about this, I think this will be really, really helpful for all of us. Okay, now another uh wish is there. So, Panita Chivara means uh nice, uh beautiful, um, maybe expensive, good-looking, whatever. Chivers. So the monks are offered those um uh requisites, right? And then uh every time you expect, oh, every time you don't get it. And you expect that the, the nicest one will be um received by you, let's say like. At the end of the katina, the, the Vassana season, uh, one monk is selected to be offered the. Uh, the robe, katina robe, but only one monk is selected. And if everyone else is um expecting. And if he or she doesn't get it and then he, if he or she gets angry, that's not good, that's not good. And it, it, it's not only the chiver, it can happen with the others too, but it's re, uh, the. The requisite chiver is given here, but you can apply it to uh other lifetime situation too. For example, for a layperson, it's not an achiever, right? You maybe. Maybe in the new year time, um, someone comes and offer you. Uh, different, different gifts and uh so you expect something nicer and you don't get it, maybe another. Family member get it or maybe even the children, children have these toys, you know, when you. When the parents offer toys, if they are not similar, the, the other children will be very mad, very upset with that. And maybe in the school or uh in the office, you know, these things can happen to you too. So be mindful about that and think, okay, this is, I learned this one from. And it's not going to help me. So I had to be really careful about that. So you can think of it. So, uh, it can happen to, not only to Chivara, it can happen to Pindapata. It can happen to Senasana, it can happen to Gilanapache. So these are the normally, normally the four requisites. Uh, of monks and yeah, so it can be applied to, in, I think in today's context, it can be so different. Maybe a temple, maybe uh, uh, an estate or, you know, the monks have offered many things today, even a vehicle. Um, so many things are offered, uh, so if you don't get it, you get, if you get upset. Uh, that's not really, really good. So very nice uh for all of us to know these things. When we know this, uh, we can be aware and we can actually uh, uh, caution ourselves. We can have a precaution, okay, this is the emotion that I'm going through right now. I learned something, I should not gain, be angry, I should not be bitter now, okay? And, um. So blemish. Uh, suppose these uh spheres of bad, unskillful wishes are seen and heard. To be not given by a mendicant, even though they dwell in the wilderness, in remote lodgings. Eat only alms food, wander indiscriminately for alms food, wear ragless robes. And we are shabby robes, their spiritual companions don't honor, respect, reverence and venerate them. So, um, what really is the case here, this Papakanang Akusalanang, Ichavacharanang, Adivachanang. So these are actually, um, uh, unskillful wishes, Papakanang Akusalanang, unwholesome. Uh, these are, are bad, unskillful wishes. And we have to be really uh careful about uh this. Uh, Adhivachanang is uh like the similar word. Uh, Yadidang Anangananti. So this is like a blemish. So if you have these papaka, unwholesome, uh, and unskillful wishes. Uh, then, uh, you can see, Appahina Disanticev Souyantiche, eh, they are not. Declined in you, they are not gone, they are not, they, they don't disappear. Uh, it can really uh make you uh more suffer. Suppose these spheres of bad, unskillful wishes are seen and heard to be not given up by a mendicant. Appahina, not given up. And, um, so, uh, Souyantiche uh means. Uh, Disantice Souyant, Disantice means uh you see that and Souyantice means you hear that. And uh seen and heard. Uh, so. Aranyako means uh the one who dwells in the, um, the wilderness, in the forest. Panthasayanasano means uh in the remote lodgings. Pindapatico means eat only alms food and he, that person doesn't eat uh. Uh, cooked food at home, you had to always you uh depend on alms food. Sapadanchari and wander indiscriminately for alms. Pansukulika means you wear rag robes, Luka Chivardharo means you wear shabby robes. Athakonang Sabrahmachari, Sabrahmachari is the spiritual companion, the one who practices with you, co-practitioners. Nacheva Sakkaranti, uh, if they don't uh honor. Uh, Garunkaranti, NaGarunkaranti, not respect, Namaneinti, NoPujenti, not reverent and venerate. So this is, um, this is, or if those things happen, um, that can be unskillful wish. Yeah, even though you are in the wilderness, even though you are in the remote lodgings, only depending on alms food. And, uh, you know, so, uh, even though you wear those rag robes and all that stuff. Uh, and still, um, you are not doing well. Still you have copper anger and uh, uh, apa, what do you call, um, the bitterness. And still you have angana, uh, the blemish. So this is a very, very important thing. Why is that? It's because these spheres of bad, unskillful wishes, Sayitapi, Sayitapi. Uh, because also Khantapati, Abhata, uh. Okay, uh, suppose a bronze, bronze dish, Khansapati, Abhata. Uh, you, you brought it uh from the, uh, the boutique or the shop. And then Kamarakulava, Parasuddha, Pariyodatha. Suppose a bronze dish was brought from a shop, was made clean and bright. Now it is Parasuddha Pariyodatha, very clean and very bright. Okay. So here, um, Ahikunapa means carcass of a snake. Kukkura Kunapa means carcass of a dog. Manussa Kunapa is carcass of a man. So, um, very interesting, um, um. Similarly here is given, um, Tang Enang Samika owners, owners. Uh, were to prepare it with carcass of a snake, a dog or a human and then, uh. Uh, cover it with a bronze lid. And prepare it through the marketplace and the parody, and parrot it through the marketplace. So now. Suppose a bronze dish was brought from a shop, was made clean and bright, then the owners were to prepare it with the carcass of a snake. A dog or a human, cover it with a bronze lid and parrot it uh through the marketplace. Now you just display it, you just display it, um, just like uh nothing. Yeah, you, you go everywhere, you take it, you parrot it uh through the marketplace. And interesting word here is, uh, uh, yes, Antarapanam. Antarapanam means uh through the marketplace, Apana is a marketplace. Khansapatiya Patikujitva, Patikujitva means uh, um. Having, having led, having uh closed, covered it with the, uh, with the lead. Now, when people see that, they say. Tameenanjano, diswa, evangvadeya, now, when people see that, they say. Ambho, kim ev, uh king ev idang, hariyati, uh janya janyang vyati. Janya, janya janyang vyati, my good man. Uh ambho, ambho means um good person or good, honorific term to address someone. What is that you are carrying like a precious treasure? Like janya janyang via, janya janyang via means uh uh like a precious uh treasure. Uh king ev idang, what is that? Thang enang, uh uttahitva, appapuritva, olokey. So they open it, uh open up the lid for people to look inside. Now, what is inside, you know that? Partikulya, partikulya tacha, santahaya, jaygut, jayguchatacha, santahaya. Now, what's happening there, as soon as they saw it, they were filled with loathing, um amanapa. And uh partikulata, revulsion, you don't like it. And santahaya, jayguchada, you feel like disgusting, awkward. And uh jiguchita, jiguchitanampi, na uh bhuttukammyata. Asa pageva, suhitanam, not even those who are hungry want to eat it. Let alone those who had eaten, so jiguchitanampi means uh people who are hungry. Uh bhuttukammyata means uh you feel like eating, you don't get it. Because even those people who are hungry, they don't want to eat it anymore. And what about the people who have already eaten? They don't want it at all, don't want even to think of it. So this is how repulsive, how loathful and loathsome and disgusting. Uh these things are, the carcass of a, uh of a um snake or a dog or a human. Uh now, in the same way, when these spheres of bad, unskillful wishes are seen and heard. To be not given up by the mendicant, their spiritual companions don't honor, respect, reverence and venerate them. So you have to uh be really uh careful about that, it is like uh. Uh it is like uh carcass um covered uh with a bronze lid. And you take it all throughout, right across the the shops and all, and just showing up. But inside, it's really disgusting something, loathful something and you don't want it. And even though you practice in the, in the deep jungle, if you still have these things. Um yeah, that is something, I think this is not to despise those people who are practicing. But it is really important that those real practitioners uh are aware of this. And they can really be mindful about that and then they can get rid of it. And or the other people in the, maybe like in the city, they might even accuse, but this is not to do that as well. Or if you write, if you accuse other people, like practice, those practitioners in the wilderness, they might be really good ones. There can be, still it is very hard for someone to practice in the wilderness, right? With such simple lifestyles and those monks in the, in the urban areas, if they accuse those. Monks in the wilderness uh just like this, uh that's not going to be good either, that's even worse. So they are doing something at least, now here, um now someone is accusing you. Um by, because you are even in the lower realm, even more in the, the lower realm. Because these are at least taking some effort, making some effort to get rid of this uh unwholesome. Um unwholesome uh s- unskillful wishes. So, but having said that, uh all of us will have to be really careful. And that way, we can make some uh really, uh really good uh progress. It's because these spheres of bad, unskillful wishes are seen and heard to be not given up by that uh venerable. Okay, I think with that, I would like to conclude today and maybe we will. Uh we will finish it up by uh next week and thank you again for joining us. Um so um with the Anangana Sutta. Uh the Ajmanikaya five, uh we learned something which can be really helpful to all of us. Uh not only to the monks, please uh don't try to accuse the monks now, now you know some weapons. But don't try to use those weapons to attack those uh monks in the the wilderness. And the the monks in the, the urban area should not use those weapons to attack those monks in the wilderness. They are doing really good job, it's only a matter of uh, you know, being more uh assertive, more mindful. Uh that you make some effort uh to get rid of your own, those simple um offenses, simple blemishes. That can make your life much more better, even the laypeople should think of it the same way. Uh as laypeople, we also have uh many things, many issues, ego-related things. And then we have to think if you have that, if you just uh only worry about your name and fame and. Titles and all that stuff, that is like taking uh the carcass of a dog, the carcass of a snake. The carcass of a human, covered with a bronze lid and then uh you take it all around. And nothing is there, it's all loathsome, it's all disgusting and nothing worthwhile. So um think of it and learn something for our own uh life, for the benefit and well-being of our own spiritual. Um life and hopefully uh this can be very uh a wonderful uh guideline. A wonderful torch, a beacon of light to all of us, to walk in the right path. Thank you for joining us and wish you all the very best of luck, see you again next week, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Banty.
Thank you, Banty.